Tuesday, July the 18th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. The prayer will be by Councilman George of Ward One and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Mr. Billy Booth. If you would, please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices and please stand.
For the pledge by Councilman George. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, go backwards. Please join me for the pledge.
What?
Oh, wait. Are we gonna pray? Yeah, pray. All right, he's got us confused here.
Let's pray. Oh God, we thank you for this day. We thank you because you're God. We come recognizing you because you said it to acknowledge you and you would direct our path. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your peace. We ask for your protection upon our city. We ask for your guidance and guidance upon our officers. We give you glory in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Right now, listen, join me for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman George, and thank you, Mr. Billy Booth. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilman Jackson is out of town with his family, so he's attending by phone this evening. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
Gochet's Farmer's Market will be held a second Saturday every month from May to September, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. Gochet youth football registration is now open for flag, tackle, and cheer for ages five through 12. Contact our Gochet Recreation Athletics Department for more details. And the City of Gochet and GHS baseball staff presents the Gochet Youth Baseball Camp for ages five through 12 on July 22nd from 9:00 AM until 12:00 PM at the Gochet High School Basketball Field.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That now brings us to our note of presentation agenda. It brings us to our business agenda. Item number one, approval of the FY 2023 budget amendments by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
As you know, every year in July, we approve the budget amendments for the fiscal year. It's a review of the revenues and expenditures today, and basically, these are adjustments that have to be made. In the general fund, we're basically allocating additional revenue and adjusting for shortfall. Two of the main things in the general fund is we are budgeting the state funding that was allocated for the premium pay for public safety. We cut those checks back in January, so now I'm budgeting those items. And we're also budgeting the surplus property that was discussed in last meeting, the sale. In Fund Two, the HP One Modernization Act, the Use Tax, I'm adjusting our use tax distribution down. We will not receive 100% of the funding because of the CPI adjustment. Y'all may know that the state has made some corrections to the way that will be calculated in the future. It'll be captive 0.5% of CPI. We took a hit because your base thing, which was based on five-year average, throwing out high and low, was adjusted up every year by the cost, by the CPI inflation rate. The first two years, it was 1.7, 1.2, then it jumped to 7% and 6.5, and our expenditures could not keep up with that rate because you had to spend your, you have to spend your base plus the inflation rate to get 100%, and we didn't make it. So that's why that's being adjusted. Starting, it started July 1, we'll redo our base expenditure based on 21 and 22, and we'll see how that looks. And the ARCA Fiscal Repatriation Funds is Fund 003. I'm budgeting your MCWI, the Municipal County Water Infrastructure. That's the money we were seeing from the state and the county for the sewer lines that's seen from all the sanitary sewer main rehab and the city divided station project. Fund 30 is to budget the MDAH Schoolhouse Grant, 156. I'm allocating the local forfeitures that the police department has received in pretty much then. The Tywens Project is being adjusted because they cut our funding $40,000 for that. Shepherd State Park is being the kayak launch. We, they made to reallocate Tywens for the overrun of the project. Fund 177 is budgeting interest for, that's state funds we received for Shepherd State Park improvements. Your Town Commons, that's budgeting your $2 million state funding allocation. And also, I'm moving out the songwriter, Songwriters Performing Arts Center into its own fund, which will be Fund 309, which is the town's center development complex that's supposed to be in part of the Town Commons Complex. The 55 Water Sewer, that's just admitting the budget to the current estimated project cost, hopefully, that'll be the last one. Fund 361, Go Mesa, that's your additional funding that you received from the state for that project. Fund 370 and 371 are the two county water projects that had to be budgeted for Fedstart drainage and the animal shelter. Those were not included in the original budget. Fund 400 is basically just allocating the county funds you received earlier this year and moving contingency funds out to cover project overruns. And then, Fund 421, I'm closing out that capital project to Fund 355, which is the water treatment plant. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any citizen comments on business agenda item number one? Any citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution approving the budget amendments for FY 2023?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
Good job already. We're rearing up for budget season, and I know it's gonna be a tough one, but a good one, because we got a lot of good things coming. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
Teresa, we thank you for your hard work and everything you do. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, authorization to submit an application to the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act, Go Mesa, 2024 funding for Martin Bluff and Hickory Hills sewer improvements in the amount of $2,701,150 by Ms. Soshe.
And the Martin Bluff portion of this application is to propose existing 4,000 one-year feet eight-inch sewer gravity with 16-inch, and that's on Martin Bluff Road. And Hickory Hills portion is to install approximately 4,000 one-year feet new gravity sewer gravity wiring lines for two residences.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? No. Do we have a motion by council to approve the authorization to submit the application to Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act, Go Mesa, 2024 funding for Martin Bluff and Hickory Hills sewer improvements in the amount of $2,701,150?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
Does this, does this have anything to do, well, I see a sewer gravity main on the Martin Bluff Road? We're asking for more money.
Yes, the pipe up there, because it's not part of any other civil project, and the pipe up there is undersized, and it needs, it's been an eight-inch main, it needs to be a 16-inch, so it doesn't, sewer doesn't ever flow as much.
Is this within?
No, it's outside. It's outside the wiring project. It's going.
It's outside. That was my second question. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
No.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank goodness it's outside of that wiring project. Other than that, no comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, authorization for the submission of a grant application to the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for funding through the Restore Act for Town Commons in the amount of $2,217,475 by Ms. Soshe.
We have to secure this funding for Town Commons for trails, treehouses, boardwalk, bloodless discovery area, people walk forward, overflow parking, sidewalk to overflow parking and to college campus, and concession service.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? If you did come to the podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Mayor Tany, I just wanted to find out if I.
Ms. Tany, state your address.
2001 Glen Cove Drive, West Gate. I just wanted to know, is this being built on the college or is it being built outside the college?
Outside the college.
Okay, that was it, that's what we were asking.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the submission of a grant application to the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for funding through the Restore Act for Town Commons in the amount of $2,217,475?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
I've got a little long with the lady back because in the description it says sidewalk for overflow parking and college campus. Are we gonna run a?
Sidewalk over back, I guess they call that what, North Dawson? It's a sidewalk to North Dawson that.
By the far west.
To all the way to Gochet Van Cleve Road on both sides. And to the overflow parking, which was not built, but it's built over by the, kind of by.
Water tower.
Yeah.
What's that got to do with college campus?
The sidewalks are doing.
The sidewalks are going to join the one that goes to Gochet Van Cleve by the college campus, is what he means.
So it's gonna connect on.
It's trying to ban foot traffic from the college to.
Sidewalk is gonna, where it connects to the sidewalk going on the college campus?
Going to Gochet Van Cleve, you cross Gochet Van Cleve, and there's another sidewalk. It's just trying to make it more walkable for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Gilat?
That's it.
Councilman College?
That answered my question.
Councilman Anderson?
It didn't answer mine.
You did a bunch.
There's not a sidewalk now presently between Northwood Hills Valley Wood and the college at all, but we had this, is this part of that?
No, sir, this is strictly.
Okay, on this side of Gochet Van Cleve Road?
Yes.
Okay.
North Dawson, they call it North Dawson, it runs in front of Town Commons.
There's still not gonna be a sidewalk though from there to the college.
But we have a grant application through Gulf Coast.
Regional planning.
Regional planning.
For that sidewalk?
For that sidewalk, part of your talk.
Okay, I misunderstood, I was, I didn't know if that included that.
No.
It's actually to go from where, and somehow or not, you took that location to cross over to Northwood Hills.
Yeah, so like now.
There is a separate application in for funding to get one from Howie Nani today.
That's all I got.
Okay. Councilman Elvin, no comment. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a medical marijuana dispensary in a C2 community commercial zoning district located at 3600 Gochet Van Cleve Road, PID number 82435010.060, GPC number 22-44-CU. Planning Director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Mississippi provisions for LLC doing business has moved down for this conditional use permit that would allow medical marijuana dispensary in C2 community district. The application fee of $250 was paid on November 14, 2022, and all public notice requirements have been met. There is an existing building on the property, y'all need to know, this is the old Chevron Station, it's next, west of the fire station, Central Fire Station.
West, what, yeah, what?
Just west of the Central Fire Station.
Oh, okay.
The old Chevron Station.
Oh, okay.
The comprehensive plan's future land use designation for this property is actually civic, I believe that probably has something to do with it being so close to college campus and that property there. I've included the review criteria for major conditional uses outlined in our available ordinance in section 4.17.5 through review. And upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends city council approve request is presented with change, but the operating hours should be limited to from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The city council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional use major changes, or deny the conditional use major. Include the excerpt from the meeting, the city meeting, and the big package application. Do you have any questions on?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve the conditional use major that would allow medical marijuana dispensary in a C2 community commercial zoning district located at 3600 Gochet Van Cleve Road, PID number 82435010.060, GPC number 22-44-CU?
I make a motion that we approve. The planning permission recommendations, including the change to operating hours.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
I have no comment on this one.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so would the school be considered a, I mean, the college be considered a school as a distance from it? Would that be considered that? Because I think there have to be so many, so far away from a school.
Mr. Danos is gonna answer that question. He had been dealing with the state on that.
Councilman Jackson, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We, we went through this process and communicated with the Department of Revenue. They, they make sure that they are far enough away from churches and schools and daycares and things of that nature at the state level, and if they've already gotten their permitting from the state, then they've already examined that and made sure that they're compliant.
Okay, thanks, sir, that, I have no further comment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
Somebody tell me where this exact location is.
Gas station across from Little Caesar's, right by the fire department.
On the corner. The gas station that they modified now, that they removed all the pumps and everything?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Councilman College?
Well, this is one aspect out of the three that we can get sales tax revenue off of, so. That's what we call it.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes, have the old tanks ever been pulled and removed from the ground there?
Yes, sir, the tanks were pulled, and we actually had a grant years ago, about 2016, 17, and did all the environmental on the site.
The tanks were pulled from that location?
Yes, and the environmental cleanup.
When was that?
There was one of our brownfields.
I don't know before I got here, but the environmental grant, environmental.
Brownfield.
It was one of our first brownfield projects.
I take your word for it, but I go out there every day, and I don't remember those tanks being removed, but.
They're gone.
Okay, so it's clean?
Yes, sir.
As far as that's concerned.
The environmental, the brownfield grant had an environmental assessment on it. Both phases are not going to blow, phase one and two.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Councilman Elvin?
Thank you.
Councilman Elvin?
I have a few concerns and a few questions. Do we have someone represented? Spoke with several people today that are residents and citizens of Arthur City. Their concerns that I share, the concern about the image, possible branding of our community being that this would be the fourth marijuana-affiliated facility approved to operate in our city in less than a year's time. Are these businesses going to define us in the city in the years to come? That's one concern. All these facilities are in close proximity to the neighborhood churches and schools, which I see that they meet the criteria. This facility particularly is next to our fire department across from the residence of San River Apartments and sit at the entrance of, and exit of our community college, not to mention the amount of children that are to pass this facility every day going to the high school and passing our, our college. Were the residents of Northwood Hills and San River Apartments advised of this, this meeting, you would know this, in reference to this particular issue, is there an advertisement where these people can see and show up, and where do they find this? This is a question I was asking.
Our ordinance requires us to send letters out to properties that have 500 to 500 major use majors.
So the neighborhoods should have got a flyer.
If they have 500, either you want.
And also, there was, Councilman Elvin, also, there was a sign there for many weeks because they had a hearing, and then they had to table it and have another hearing. And due to the state working with the college on some issues with the daycare that's no longer at the college, so there was a sign on the corner of the property that was pretty large that you could see, announced in a public hearing.
At the gas station?
Yes, it was on the corner of the road, and it was visible. And it was there for months.
Okay, because I just had several residents of that Northwood Hills advise that they were, they weren't aware of it, and they have apprehensions in reference to it, and I did advise them that at the planning commission, they were able to voice these concerns, but they were not aware of it. Also, with the development of our amphitheater, will this facility invoke a positive or negative response from the residents that are being directly, that are directly in proximity of our city's new facility? These are just things they wanted us to take into consideration when we make this vote. Sir, from this, this company, have you or any representative, representatives of your company had direct dialogue with the fire chief or police chief to see how this facility will impact their operations?
I personally have not, I cannot speak for my partners. I do know that we've discussed with the city to make sure that we do have the easement, so we have to do an easement through the fire department.
Well, my concern is the issues, how will it affect them if they have a fire? I mean, obviously, if this place catches on fire, it's gonna be a different type of fire than a house fire, because now you've got the marijuana to deal with and the smoke to deal with. How's that gonna affect our firemen? Also, the alarms that are, I mean, that go off if there's a burglar at this location, how are they gonna operate? Do you have a security team that's on scene, and how will they operate with our law enforcement?
So we will have.
You want to come and state your name, address, and so we know who, the clerk won't know for the minute who's responding to Councilman Elvin.
Michael Kiner, and for 3600 Gochet Van Cleve Road, that's the address, but I needed to say. So I'm not a very good public speaker, sir. And I'm already hearing, could you please ask that question again?
In reference to, the first thing was, have you had any dialogue with the fire chief or the police chief in relation to their, how they operate, their departments in situations of alarms, fires, that the situation, if a fire were to occur, you have marijuana in this facility, and it goes up in flames and the smoke that they have, how they, have they been addressed, how they would deal with that? And also, the burglaries, how will the police department respond to that? Then, do you have a security detail that's on there 24/7s, or do they have to interact with our law enforcement in any way?
So, on the first question, I personally have not on firefighting, but it's a little bit of my background that is for the past 10 years, I run environmental health and safety for ergon asphalt emulsions and compliance, safety, fire response, incident management is, is very dear and important to our team. To answer your second question on, on, on security measures, we will have somebody attending during all hours of operations. However, after hours, we do have alarm systems, constant video surveillance, bulletproof security screen windows, reinforced steel doors, and as well as a vault that, that, that stores the product. It does have temperature, temperature ga, temperature sensors, so if you see it, the temperature increase, we're known immediately before fire. We do have fire alarms, not only per code, for air conditioner events, but also so we can respond quickly, as well as motion detector, glass breaks, vibrations, so very easy to see the art.
Is there training that our officers need to go through?
Absolutely, and we've, and we've, we've had officers and fire departments actually to our facilities before as well, in Richmond.
One last question is.
Yes, sir.
In, in the open dialogue with the public safety side, my concern is, do you know the surroundings that you're putting this location in? Have you asked the police chief as far as the crime, the crime rates in that location, the drug rates in that location? Do they, do you know that?
I did not.
Before we put it into that location?
I did not know this, yes, sir.
Does anybody, has anybody made contact with public safety that you're aware of?
I can't answer that question, I don't know.
That's all I have.
Mayor, can I back up and ask one more question? Will the building have a sprinkler system in it?
Uh, no, no, sir.
That's not required?
No, that I'm, no, sir, not that I'm aware of the building, because it is.
It won't be required?
It's, it's such a small area, lots of sprinklers, it is not required.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
I just want to thank you and your company for looking at Gochet to invest here. Y'all have taken a belated piece of property that's been there for years and not sold, and making it look nice and aesthetically pleasing to fit into the characteristic of the neighborhood. Also, you did work with our fire chief and our city manager and staff on the easement so we could get in and out of the fire station that the city owns, and we appreciate your partnership and working with us on that to address the public safety, getting in and out. As far as the fire, I don't know, not, our fire chief could speak to it, but I would think marijuana is not as dangerous burning as gasoline, and there was a gas station there that was very busy, that has tons of traffic. When I was growing up and going in and out of that intersection, that was very dangerous. So as far as traffic, y'all have limited clientele, so the public needs to know, they don't have, it's not like a gas station where you're gonna have 25 and 30 people there at one time. It's limited on their use. The state does have strict regulations on these type of facilities so the residents can feel secure, that they have to be governed by on top of our state, on our local regulations. So just so you know, the state has very strict guidelines that they have to abide by, they have to keep doors locked. It's not like anybody who do, does not have a card to go in that facility, cannot get in that facility. So if you don't have a card, you can't get in. Is that not correct, sir? Okay. So just so the citizen, I want you to feel secure that it's not gonna bring extra crime to your area, and you cannot get in there without having a medical card, and it's very limited on how many people can be in the facility at a given time. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
There is six, four, and Councilman Elbin was a nay vote. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Consider a request for a 150-foot variance to a front yard setback. Requirements for an accessory building in a RE residential estate zoning district located at 1904 Lobben Lane, Gochae, Mississippi. GPC number 23-23-VAR, PID number 85100004.000 by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Ed and Karen Gregory. The application fee of $175 is paid on June 15, 2023, and all other notice requirements have been met. The applicant would like to replace an existing damaged 12x39 wood carport cover with a 15x40 metal carport cover. The metal carport cover will be 150 feet from the rear of the house. Therefore, the applicant needs this 150-foot variance to the front yard setback for accessory building due to the UDO requiring all accessory structures in our district to be located in the rear yard of the principal use. So I've also included, you hear the review criteria from the UDO for variance. And upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends city council approve the request as presented due to exceeding all the criteria for approval by the UDO. City council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the variance request. Again, I've included the heads up in the meeting and the plea packet for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? None? Do we have a motion by council?
So move.
We got a motion by Councilman Anderson.
Second.
A second by Councilman College. Any discussions? Start with Councilman George.
I have no comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Delac.
No comment.
Councilman College?
Due to the size, it will require engineered plans and a foundation for it. Please hold this.
Depend, if it's a pre- new year structure, then yes, it will. If it's still built, something that we look at the code book and make sure that these are the code requirements, then it will need to be repaired.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Y'all can see the planning commission, planning department tomorrow. Mr. Mr. Gregory? That's business agenda item number six. Consider a request for a nine-foot, eight-inch rear yard variance for an addition in a R1 load city, single-family residential zoning district located at 7310 Melody Drive, Gochae, Mississippi. GPC number 23-24-VAR by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
The planning department has received this request from Austin Meldron for this nine-foot, eight-inch rear yard variance for an addition in a R1 load city, single-family residential district. The application fee of $175 is paid on June 12, 2023, and all other those requirements have been met. Council members at a very recent meeting, council did approve a variance to Mr. Meldron for a variance for a front yard setback for this addition. He has since changed his mind and decided to put it on the rear of the house. So therefore, he is now asking for variance to the rear and not the front. So I've included in your packet the review criteria once again for the variance. And the planning commission, upon hearing this, recommends the city council approve the variance based on the evidence presented. City council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the variance request. We have included the excerpt and the plea packet for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation?
So move.
Motion by Councilman College? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Delac. Any discussions? Start with Councilman George.
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Delac?
No comment.
Councilman College?
In the excerpt from the planning commission meeting, said that our city attorney was going to research whether or not we can go ahead and withdraw the request for the prior variance. What did you find out on that?
We couldn't locate anything directly on point. But I, I mean, I would feel comfortable if the applicant, certainly if the applicant is willing to withdraw the prior variance in exchange for receiving this variance. If I agree, I think it's perfectly acceptable.
Okay, well, I would like to amend my motion and base the approval on the request withdrawing the private, the previous variance. Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College to amend his motion to approve with the applicant withdrawing the prior application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Delac. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Councilman Jackson, thank, motion carries. We're back to comments on the original. Councilman Anderson, you have any comment?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin, you have any comment?
No comment.
We have a motion, the original motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Delac, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Mr. Meldron is not here, this Mr. Meldron, okay, you'll let y'all, you now know. Business agenda item number seven. Consideration for an abatement at 1528 Ladner Road, Gochae, Mississippi by Mr. Scott Ankersen, our planning director.
The staff has asked Mayor and city council to stop the carrying and receive further comments regarding our recommendation to clean and cut this property at 1528 Ladner Road. Some background property of a resident has requested that the city clean and cut this old ground property. We realize that the owner is deceased and the estate is not remating the property. The grass is in excess of 20 feet tall. The staff recommends the city council approve this abatement, assess administrative fee, and have the property cleaned and cut after the 10-day statutory appeal period, the day the council adjourned. We're also asking to add that we want to clean up any debris that's on the property and secure the structure as necessary. Just looking at your attachments, I'm sure you've seen any pictures of the property, the posting, the abatement, the public noticed that was posted, the hearing notification, the property tax information. And if you have any questions about this property, I'll answer them as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion by council to approve the abatement at 1528 Ladner Road, Gochae, Mississippi with the additional request by the planning department?
Make a motion, we approve the abatement of 1528 Ladner Road with the cost to be placed as a lien on the property and assess a penalty of $1,500 or 50%, whichever is better.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussions? Start with Councilman George.
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, so are we, we going to be consistently cutting this grass year in, year out? And are, have we communicated with any, any family members? Or are there family members to research to see to it that the family members who are heirs to the property to come clean up the property themselves?
Yes, Councilman. Councilman Jackson, actually, the heirs live out of the country. They've retained an attorney in Arizona who has retained counsel in Jackson County who have a hearing on the estate in the morning, possibly for an administrator here locally to handle the estate, which that is the only asset in the estate. So they will be handling it. There are some residents interested in purchasing the property if the estate chooses to sell the property because it don't seem that the heirs are going to want to keep the property.
Okay, aye, thank you. No further questions.
Your will. Councilman Delac?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Ankersen?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
We have a, and I just want to thank our planning department and code enforcement for getting on top of this. The residents will greatly appreciate it until the estate, the transitory court can take it matters. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Delac, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda number eight. Approval of the docket of claims by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery. She has provided them to us in our packets, they've been published online. So that is the presentation by the staff. Do we have any public comments on business agenda number eight? None? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, we approve the docket of claims provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion starting with, I'm going to keep, any discussion starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Delac?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Ankersen?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
We got a motion and by Councilman College, second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, they're approved in one motion. Did everybody who wants to speak at citizen comments sign in in the back when you came in? If you did not, raise your hand so I can get this passed to you. Consent agenda is approved in one motion unless a council member wants to pull one. One is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held July the 5th, 2023. Two, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Gochae's youth football league. Three, receive June 2023 privilege license report. Four, amendment to the contract between the city of Gochae and the Gochae Firefighters Association, Local 3290 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CLOCLC. Five, approval of water and sewer adjustments for July 2023 in the amount of $6,360.48. Do we have a motion to approve consent one through five?
So move.
Motion by Councilman College? Second by Councilman Delac? All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Discuss citizen comments, and the first citizen is Ms. Delamore. And Ms. Dela, you know the Reed team. And Councilman College will hold up the line when you got one.
Okay, Delamore, 1920, West Gate Parkway. Every time I come here, I have one thing to say. Mr. Anderson's Facebook page, he has not proven his innocence about the racist comment. And some people would see this online and say, stop being a dead horse. Well, first of all, you have proven innocent. And second, you have insulted our intelligence by bringing that lawyer in here with a fake thing. It proved nothing, and you know it. And I'm asking you, Councilman, you have always said that he does not prove his innocence, you're going to ask him to resign. So I'm asking you, one by one, I say you.
I stand by the release that we had at the beginning of this.
And what was that release?
It was asking if he could not provide any proof of his post that he had to resign. But that's totally up to him, we can ask all day long.
Okay, okay, uh, Councilman Jackson, can you hear me? Are you going to ask him to resign?
Yes, ma'am. He can, uh, you want me to say it, say it? Now, I did say it last meeting, so I said again, if you wish, I'm asking him to resign, and it's up to him to resign.
The city council has issued a letter, all signed by everybody on this board.
Okay.
Asking him to resign or prove his innocence.
He has not proven his innocence, and you know, you have all this stuff in this. We have attorney over here, the attorney can tell you, he's not proving his innocence. He, you know that, did he prove his innocence? Oh, Delamore discussing, did you represent him? I wonder why? You've just been very defiant, and you know it. But, and for the ones on Facebook who say we're just beating a dead horse, well, if it was them talked about it like that by their representative, that would feel the same way a lot of us feel. If your kids were talked about the way you talked about our kids and us, how would you feel? Don't come to that religious stuff on me, don't do that. Don't do that, because I know you're going to church on Sunday and you're hanging on Monday. So let's not pull religion on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Sheila Coleman? Ms. Coleman?
My name is Sheila Coleman. I reside at 2712 Calle Hermosa. Since the last board meeting in May, I've been out of town and I've been under the weather. So I haven't been able to attend the board meeting since then. But I'm going to come back to you, Mr. Anderson, in a minute about that little hissy fit you threw with that week. I would like to address the chatter and talk I've been hearing on social media and chat rooms about the outside people coming to address the city and board about the racist comments that were attributed to Mr. Anderson's Facebook page in response to someone's post. The NAACP is recognized, is a recognized venerable organization that has been fighting the good fight for 116 years. Equal rights, integration, the stopping of Jim Crow laws, housing and voting rights are just some of the mainstream issues the NAACP has championed. I would go so far to say that one of the largest demographics outside of people of color that have benefited from these fights are white women. So to second record strength and educate those that act like they don't know, the NAACP of Jackson County are not outsiders coming in stirring up trouble or speaking their noses into Gochae's business. They are here to represent the people of Jackson County, which I'm sure we all know, Gochae is a part of. Mr. Anderson, that speech you gave on the, at the May 16th meeting, denigrating citizens of Gochae was appalling. To sit in a council seat and use your time to spew vicious and disgusting words at adults of this community should have never been allowed. Unchecked time, I might add, that you would think that you are so revered that there are men, that these men are so petty, that they would use being called the N-word as an "I got you" moment only reinforces the belief that those were your words that came from your fingers in that post. And for you to attack Mr. Hughes in such a devout manner should be reason for you to be removed if it was possible. I'm still looking for a reason for that attack. The only thing I've seen that he did was call you and your wife a liar. The way you directed your comments to the black community in this city has only gone to show where your heart lies concerning the citizens of Gochae. You don't want to represent anybody that doesn't look like you or shares your beliefs. You claim to only want the best for Gochae. And what's best for Gochae is for you and your outdated backwards-thinking mindset is to resign from the city council.
Mr. Billy Booth?
Billy Booth, 1405 Hillcrest Street, 1400, resident. Good afternoon. My first concern is a question that I would like for the council to address, and that is, what is going on with the development of the expanding of Martin Glove Road? Because seemingly, construction has stopped. And so that is one of my concerns. And so that is one of my concerns I would like, I would like to hear a response to. Um, second, you know, I stand to, I like the actions and the non-action of Councilman Anderson. In last council meeting, I came prepared to address Councilman Anderson concerning his attempt to defame my name and question my motives. I have screenshots from my phone showing my interaction with Councilman Anderson. During the month of June, he became fixated on trying to say that I'm standing in opposition to him because of I have sour breaks that he says. Um, I, he also went further, say I did not call and congratulate him on his win. I paid for an ad in the Sun Harry and I called him on the night of the election to congratulate him. In that call, if Councilman Anderson will remember, he told me that he thought he lost the election because when he went to the convention center, the poll workers told him that he looked like he had lost. I'm through with that matter because I believe it's a flaw to get our minds off of the issue at hand. And that is why Councilman Anderson won't provide verifiable proof that his Facebook page was hacked. He claims to have a whole stack of files from Facebook, but yet he hasn't shown us any proof that he was hacked. I stand today to ask and to say with lack of evidence that his Facebook page was hacked on April 16th. Councilman Anderson needs to resign.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Mr. Fred Pennington. You want to speak, Mr. Pennington? You're not gonna speak. Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore. I live in 1920 West Gate Parkway. I want to address the police department last, yesterday and last, this morning, we had a shooting in Cameron Square. And, um, we need to have that, we need police presence there regularly because it's getting bad there. And so, and the lady that live there, she's so afraid now she gonna move. And that's bad. But we need our police presence. Another thing I want to address, Rusty Anderson, you need to step down because, uh, the comments you made, that's bad. It's really bad. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Mary Tanes.
Mary Tanes, 2001, Glen Cove Drive. I was gonna start talking about Westgate, but I'm so offended. I'm looking at our representatives of Goche. What's the first thing y'all ask us to do when we walk through these halls? When you call it order? Stand up, give thanks to God and say a prayer, right? Right? Then you ask us to stand up and salute that flag. I do it very proudly. But this is an embarrassment on us. This has to stop. Y'all are sitting here telling us as citizens, you represent us. I hate that y'all are sitting here and complacently can't say anything one way or the other. But this man, and I'm saying this man because I don't know him personally, but I know you personally, and I know you personally. I kinda know your people. But I assure you, my tongue would not stop if somebody was battering him the way he has been done. I respect you. You didn't let somebody use the N-word when all this mess started. I have a Facebook page. I own a business myself. If the dude who hits the fan, they don't call my employees, they call me. We're calling y'all. This has to stop. You're allowing people to stand here and berate a man that none of y'all have shown any source against what he has said. Now, I'm not saying I'm not for finding the facts, but if you ain't got nothing different than what the man has shown us, move on. We've got Daggone Westgate sitting there, beat up by some kids. We've got Oak Grove, beat up by some kids. We got Martin Bluff, people complaining about. We got now, no disrespect to the young guy, a marijuana store that wants to move in. We've got more important things to do here, y'all. And Casey, I'm looking at you. You've got to stop. You represent people that are screaming for success. Three words on that sign, people, prosperity, and integrity. Where is it? Y'all are representing us and letting him keep on getting berated. We've got work to do. I have black people that are relatives of mine. They have been offended, but how can you say he did it? I've been hacked three times. I'm going to Disney, I'm just letting y'all know because Tate Reeves is sending me. I got hacked by Tate Reeves. Who in this building has not been hacked? Why are y'all keeping this up?
Well, I don't think, no comment, not, keep. The officers, if you open your mouth, will be, just tap you on the shoulder and you will get out. We're not having all this amen and all this going on in the public meeting and disrupting the meeting. Now, Mr. Mark Tanes. That brings us to council comments. Councilman Elvin.
No comment.
Councilman Anderson.
I shouldn't say anything, but I'm gonna say this one more time. I have 39 pages of Facebook files for a month and a half that covers this whole timeframe. And I'm gonna bring that 39 pages of Facebook files that I got. And I'm gonna invite the NAACP Vice President, Mr. Richard Lewis Jackson, to view those files with me and my attorney. And that's the only man I'm gonna let look at these files. None of the rest of you people are gonna look at my files. They're personal. And nobody deserves to sit by my attorney. And my attorney come in here and he showed you the file that would have showed. Don't, don't shake your head and no at me because the main man's gonna look at these files for that timeframe. And it's gonna prove that nowhere on my Facebook page did I comment on any such screenshot that some of you seen. And that's gonna be the final proof. If you can't accept that, then somebody's got a problem. Somebody got a serious problem if you can't believe what the Facebook files showed. This is not a city issue, it's a Facebook issue. And they turned it into a city issue. And you people, some of you are degrading this city, you're tearing this city apart by keeping, coming forward with this over and over and over. You're, you're, uh, just over and over. You sound like a broken record, but I am gonna offer my Facebook files for one person to see, along with my attorney. And if that, if that don't prove it for you, I don't know what else to say. Just God bless this city if we keep this up. That's all I got.
Councilman College.
Uh, Chief Barrett, can you elaborate on the shooting last night that was in reference?
Well, been highlighted by, it was very active right now. Certain possible associated with something going out in town. There's no threat to the media public, it's isolated incident. That's why we haven't come forward with anything.
Okay, so it's currently under investigation. It's open investigation. Understood. Concerning Martin Bluff Road, and actually I did a comment on a post yesterday about it, uh, we come across, uh, a hiccup on this project at no fault to the city. I'm gonna reiterate that, no fault to the city. The city is up to date as far as paid invoices to the contractor and to the contract. This hiccup that we've got, it's not really a city, they're getting coordinated between the contractor, the engineer, who is Baker International, and MDOTs. Hoping they're gonna come up with resolution, but right now, at this time, it is out of our hands. And we're gonna see what they come up with and thereafter, we will pursue other avenues if necessary. That's where we are. Martin Bluff Road is an unfortunate situation, uh, but it does happen at times, uh, and it's happening in a couple of areas along its coast. Finally, uh, I can say I'm one person in this room that has never been hacked on Facebook. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman College.
Councilman Gyllenhaal.
I've been hacked those dogs.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I'm glad your hacker didn't use bad language.
Councilman Jackson will.
Wasn't my place to say, but it's.
You ready for me?
Yeah, Councilman Jackson.
Okay, aye. Um, so, I have one thing, um, so, um, a while back, uh, we had, uh, you know, I meant to bring this up much sooner because I, they was gonna come to the council board and address this issue, but I, I guess they never came. But it was a child that was hit in my ward. And I'm, I'm speaking on this because, um, a few people addressed this to me when they, when a child was hit. Um, and I, um, of course, um, I've been pushing for a B-bump in my ward or throughout the city because I know a lot, there's a lot of places where people flying up and down neighborhood roads. And, um, I'm just addressing this again, you know, reiterating on it again, the importance of it. I know it could be a hassle, it could be a hassle rider with B-bumps. I know it's a, um, the, the, the question is gonna be what the insurance is gonna do and things like that, or how they're gonna react towards it. But again, you know, I've been through other cities and, um, that have these, in certain ways, we can, I guess we can, uh, develop, I mean, build those where they want to affect, um, low riding vehicles, but it will make everyone slow down throughout the community. So I just wanna reiterate on that once, once again, and I had a little further comment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George.
Um, I wanted to speak in response to the last comment we heard, but, um, she stepped out a moment. But for everybody else, just to understand really where we are as the council on the situation with Mr. Rusty Anderson. We have a thing called Robert's Rules of Order. It allows for council to make comments, constituents that pay taxes to make comments. We cannot control what those comments are. By law, we allow people to make comments. We're not going to silence anyone regarding any topic that has to do or takes place in the city. The situation with Rusty is between Rusty and his constituents that live in the city who have a right to speak during comments. So to say we are allowing people to berate Rusty is not the case. This has not been enjoyable. But we have rules and we have laws that allow for citizens to speak during council meetings. And we cannot tell people they can't speak just because we don't want to hear the topic or we don't agree with the topic. We have to allow it. We have no control. We can't, we can't tell Rusty to quit. We can't tell Rusty to keep on. We can't tell Rusty to provide us anything. We've asked it, he's provided it, we're done. This is between Rusty and constituents. There's nothing else for the council to do or make comments. We can't keep anybody quiet. I know you don't agree with that, but that's the rules that are in place. Okay? I just want to, because you came directly at us about this. So we follow rules of order that are put in place by the state. We can't bury from that. That's all I have.
First of all, I want to thank our police department for their hard work and, um, fire department and all of our city staff for your hard work. Every department from planning to utilities to finance, um, you all do a hard job and you do a great job. The amount of city staff we have to run our city compared to other cities and us to continue to provide the service we do is outstanding. So I want to thank you, Ms. Jancy, for your hard work and leadership, um, to your directors who continuously stay motivated in, um, the midst of negativity and being beat up on social media. Um, social media is getting, um, bad. It's a lot of the world's problems, um, with negativity and fake news. I spoke about this last meeting and I'm gonna speak about it again because I and other people are over fake news. Just because you hear it on the street or you hear it from your neighbor, yeah, they might be trustworthy, but they might've got it from somebody who didn't know really what's going on. So get it from your elected officials, get it from the city. Our social media page is very active. We have an app, it's very active. We got accolades on a comment on Facebook saying we encouraging people to download it and the Point Clear website last week. It was amazing to see all the positive comments instead of some negativity. Police department don't monitor, we don't have the staff to monitor social media, neighborhood apps. So if you see somebody breaking in something that looks suspicious, you need to call the Goche Police Department and then call your elected official if you want to call us. We're here and we can then follow up. But for them to be there fast and responsive to catch somebody, you need to call them As far as the, um, you know, Ms. Tane, your comment, we have an ordinance on how our city council meetings are ran. Every citizen, used to, years ago, citizens couldn't comment at public meetings like this. So we could take public comments away if that's what citizens want, but I don't think that's what they want. So we cannot, if they're not using vulgar language, we cannot contain what they might be expressing to their people that they elected and their ward to represent them. Unfortunately, I don't agree with it per se, that what's happened, I don't know that he's been hacked or not hacked. That's not me, but the man upstairs knows the truth, okay? And I can tell you right now, you say us board members and let people be through the wringer, well, when you've heard somebody use a language, then we ain't gonna comment on something. We're gonna refer to our press release, okay? And that's where I'm leaving it tonight. Read the press release and it's very edgy, informative, and it's clearly precise on how this board felt. IP addresses. My cousin works for the government on a national level dealing with hackers and scam and all that. And I can assure you, an IP address has nothing to do with hacking. Okay? So that's how I'm gonna leave it. Unfortunately, I hate to feel that way because I get, if you think we all like coming here to hear it, we don't. But unfortunately, we're dealt with bad apples and we have to deal with it too. As far as the DMR, I want to thank them. There's no representative here, but the DMR had a boat rescue this resident from Soundview. I don't know, um, possibly that could have been a citizen from Temple. Um, it came from that area in South Goche. And kudos to that resident who called DMR for a stranded, um, boat, um, last week. And, um, DMR did a great job, um, rescuing them. They were guests from Petal, Mississippi. Um, and I want to thank the owner, the new owner of Two Seas Fishing Camp for allowing DMR to use his facility to launch their boats in a emergency situation. So, um, thank them and their agency if you see them. Also, I want to thank the recreation department. Ms. Bilbo is not here this evening. Um, oh, you are, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
She usually sits over there.
Uh, no, she's normally over here. She threw me off. Um, I just want to thank her staff. It's hot out there and, um, they continue to do a good job making sure city hall looks manicured and all the parks look manicured. And the accolades that we got last week from residents who came in town for the summer to visit their family and they took their children to the splash pad in the city park. Um, and the positive comments about our park was just phenomenal. It was rewarding, um, to hear that. And just thank your staff from the bottom of my heart and the council's heart. We greatly appreciate, um, them and their hard work. Also, to the farmer's market, um, Rachel and Chastity, um, Shanda from the planning department always volunteers. Um, and I was out there, it was very hot. But they, um, continue and also for all the vendors who participate, it's hot, but they do it for the citizens to give you an amenity to go in an event to go enjoy. And I ask that you thank them, but I also ask that you support, um, our events that we host here in the city. But I also ask that you support, um, our events that we host here in the city. The police chief. The crime is still down compared to this time last year. You might not see it, but it is down. Facebook, pay attention. We have a lieutenant. Miss Lieutenant Ward, Charlie Ward, was working the other day. He, on his personal level, took it to another level to inform the citizens. Kudos to him for getting on that neighborhood app because we don't have a paid person to monitor, but he wanted the citizens to know, be on the lookout, call the PD and be aware you have somebody in your neighborhood, children, minors, teenagers going around opening car doors to steal stuff. I'm here to tell you, I got a phone call this morning. It's imperative. Cars have locks on them for a reason. Lock the doors. Just lock them. Yes, it's your personal property, but lock the doors. Every call we have had, the police chief is sitting right here, and he's gonna say yes or no. But not a one has a broken window. Not a one has a broken lock. They all were unlocked. Guns left in there. They're getting them out and they're using them to kill people or do other bad things with. So definitely, if you're gonna leave it unlocked, don't leave a handgun in there. And don't leave your purse or your wallet with your credit cards, your social security card, your driver's license, and your cash because you're not getting it back. I'm just here to tell you they're taking it and they going to use it. So we have put social media blurbs out there. We have Neighborhood Watch, but at some point, we have to take responsibility for our actions. So lock up. I'm encouraging everybody to encourage your neighbors, family members, and everybody. We had a high school student. Car got stolen. It's a shame. The keys were left in it. Don't leave your keys in the car. I mean, just, you cannot. It don't matter if it's day or night. And I'm here to tell you because I want you to be informed. We got a safe community, but it's happening all over the country, not just here in Gochay, Mississippi, right now. We are having a rash of these car thefts and burglaries, and they're getting in them because they're unlocked. I want to leave you with, may your week be filled with good thoughts, kind people, and happy moments. It's time that the citizens start being positive, as you heard tonight. We all try to be positive as your leaders, but we need the residents to try to be positive and stop spreading fake news. And as I say, the haters are gonna hate, but you got to stay positive. You gotta try to move forward. We are trying to recruit economic development, but they don't want to come to a city where citizens are spreading rumors or talking about other businesses. I mean, if you don't like a business and have nothing good to say about it, then just don't go to it or don't say something about it. If you don't like the local realtor or real estate company in town, don't use them. Go to the other one. If you don't like the gas station that the pumps don't work, go to the other one. But don't go around spreading the negativity about the business on social media. Please, it hurts economic development. I hope y'all have a rest of your good week, and we will continue. We do have some positive things going on in economic development, and I cannot wait till we can break the news. So just know there is economic development activity being in Gochay, Mississippi going on. That brings us to our city manager's comments. Thank you, Ms. Jancy. That brings us to our city clerk comments. Ms. Montgomery? Our deputy clerk? Our city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have a motion to adjourn until August the first, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P.M.?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Collins. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Councilman George. And also, I just would like to thank my father-in-the-black, um, Clark Von and my stepmother, Loretta Von. I thank y'all for coming this evening, um, and supporting, um, me and the city. We have a motion by Councilman Collins, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Councilman Jackson? Motion carries. We're adjourned.